All right, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I'd like to thank you for attending our special meeting of the Salina Accessibility Advisory Board. If we could, let's do a quick roll call.
Jack Davis.
Kristi Marco.
Here.
Kathy Mastin.
Here.
Jan Mendel.
Here.
David Powell.
Here.
Bill Rousen.
Here.
Jake Wise.
Here.
Ethan Brown. Zachary Perea.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the reason for our special meeting is we have a report before us that we need to submit, basically, to the City Commission indicating what we have done in the past and what we intend to hopefully accomplish in 2019. Before you have a list of some of the objectives or some of the goals that have been discussed, we would kind of want to go through those and formulate a plan as to how we might meet these goals. And then, in turn, this will be submitted to the City Commission. It's kind of a checks and balance that they do with the committees. So with that, I guess we officially call the meeting to order. Goal number one was to work with community businesses to better enforce handicap parking violations. This is a situation that not only deals with public parking, but it would also apply to private facilities, such as Walmart or Dylan's or places like that, which are considered to be private property, which would require a complaint being registered with the management or ownership of that property, and they, in turn, would have to file a complaint with the Salina Police Department. So what that goal is, is to establish a better working relationship to achieve that, instead of somebody just willy-nilly pulling into the parking spot and using it to run in and grab a six-pack of pop or what have you. Are there any suggestions as to how we might be able to accomplish that? I think first and foremost, it's an education situation where, excuse me, not only dealing with the Salina Police Department and the Salina County Sheriff's Department, would be an education process for the proprietors and management of the local establishments.
Getting the word out, maybe explaining who we are, what we do, and how we maybe could help them. I know that's when the ADA first came out, I was on Independent Connection, and that's what we did, was we went to businesses. We said, "This is what we're here, and this is how we might help you with accessibility issues."
I think that would be best accomplished with face-to-face meetings or brochures, postcards. What would you think?
I think face-to-face works better. I think people put their, or both. I think you're going to need something for them to follow up on, but...
I think one in four go hand-in-hand with our goals. For us to be able to educate people is the first step, and then the second step is the face-to-face. So when we're talking about the objectives that were talked about previously, step one is we're going to have to create some kind of material or something as to educates the individuals. And then, part two is then putting that information out there for the individuals on how to maybe handle those situations when they're running into maybe somebody that's abusing a handicap parking spot, and what steps they should take. That's kind of the consensus I thought we were kind of talking towards last time.
And I would guess Independent Connection probably has some good material that would be helpful for...
Well, that's what I was going to say, maybe letting them know what a resource in the community is. So like the Center for Independent Living that I work at, we are a resource for businesses, for people, for anyone with any kind of ADA concerns. We can meet with them and discuss what their options are or what the laws say, that kind of stuff. So letting the folks in the community here just, I guess, just making it aware that they actually have that resource that's available to them if they just want to access it.
Should we develop something along the lines of accessibility ambassadors to where maybe we would go out and meet face-to-face with management of the facilities to let them know what's available and know that the board is there for consulting?
I think that sounds pretty logical to me. I think if you go there face-to-face, then you're less threatening rather than sending a letter or a piece of mail that says, you know, "If you're not complying with the ADA, this is what we're going to do." If you just show up and say, "We're here to help you. We don't want to get you in trouble. We just want to make sure that people are following the law so that everyone has access equally," so. If we had a committee or such that would go around, maybe to, I'm sure that we couldn't get to all the businesses, but, you know, each year, if we address so many businesses, then eventually we would get to them.
I heard just today about kind of a, well, at Astra, on the Thursday of every month, does invites businesses or organizations or, and to just have discussion about what's going on and what they're doing and that sort of thing. At Astra has become a pretty popular place in the state.
That's true.
I'm wondering if that might not be a...
I just went to, it's called a parlay, and I went to one last night, Hilton and I did, and it was really interesting and thought-provoking, you know, some conversation. And I just talked to the owner, Tammy, and she's looking for, you know, more conversations that people are really, that are kind of controversial in the community, which something like that would be, because it's like, you know, on one side, someone just like, "Whatever, it's just a spot." But, you know, people that care about equal access are like, "No, this is more than just a spot. This is, you know, a spot that people need when they need it." So I think that she might be interested in having something like that there, and that would be a cool spot where, you know, lots of people would come and feel comfortable talking about it, so.
I just was talking to Sandy today, and that's how I knew about it.
Oh, okay.
Well, first and foremost, we'd need to develop the educational material.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Well, I know Independent Connection can provide some of those materials, can locate some educational materials that are just universal stuff.
Do you have some of those materials that, you know, maybe we could just keep in our own personal vehicle in our own personal life?
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if we're out and about?
Sure, and I'll provide you also with, like, some websites that you can go to for quick references, too. Yeah.
Are there any other suggestions on goal one, on how we can obtain?
Can I ask a quick question? I did hear possibly trying to address specific businesses throughout the year, and obviously knowing that we can't address, you know, not address all of them, but is there a number you guys feel comfortable with as far as a goal you want to address at least five or four this, you know, this year?
One per quarter or however...
I didn't catch all of that, I'm sorry.
Is there a number that you guys want to put in as a goal to, the number of businesses you guys want to address throughout the year? So you guys, let's just say you guys want to talk to Walmart, Target...
Did we get by saying like three to five?
Is, are you guys...
Three to five for the year?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, if we talk to more of them, that's all right.
Say if we do better than that, that's great.
Okay.
But, yeah, that seems reasonable, reachable, attainable.
Like four, one per quarter? Maybe? Or one per quarter, so like four total?
Yeah.
For the year?
And I was going to interject, and maybe Evelyn can help. But just as setting these guidelines, as it being a plan, I think as we go throughout the year, perhaps more objectives will get developed from them. So maybe just, again, just to have this outline and a starting point.
Kristi, when could you make that material available? We don't have our next scheduled meeting until May.
Before then. Probably Monday, just reminding you.
Yeah.
I'm taking notes. That's okay.
I know.
I appreciate reminder emails.
Are there any other comments on goal number one?
Well, how would we meet with the businesses as a group or just...
Well, if we can establish something where we can get a group of people together in a setting such as at Astra, I think that would be, you know, it's an already established kind of forum.
When business people from downtown come there all the time, so.
I'm not familiar with that Astra. What's that about or...
It's...
Coffee shop?
Okay.
On Santa Fe and what, and what's this?
It's right around the corner.
Yeah.
And then, Ash. There's the parking lot, Santa Fe and Ash, and then right next to us, that is.
I think that would be the ideal way to do it, because if you, you're faced with a problem of, if you do it independently, finding a place, getting the time, getting the word out, and then who knows how many people will show up. With a situation like at Astra, the people are already used to coming there. I don't know if you have to be put on an agenda or what, but...
My understanding is that Tammy is really helpful in getting the word out and helping advertise what's going on, so.
Yeah, she has this series that she's developed for the year, calling it Public Parlay, like Evelyn said, but each one would have a different topic, so she, it's an official series that she is doing to kind of just bring community members together to discuss things, so. There's also community forums that are held here in Salina where you get a lot of business representatives there. Kathy, you go to the one here locally over at the Senior Center, don't you?
Yes, on the Fridays once a month, yeah.
And so that information can be shared there, and you're getting several businesses there as well.
Organizations such as the N-Bucks would also be another good one. I think there are plenty of opportunities out there for an outreach program that could cover more than just the parking situation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Parking's not the only issue.
No, no, far from it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. But this day and age, our community should be accessible to everyone, and they still aren't, and... Yeah. It's unfortunate that they aren't, and with the resources that are available, they should be, so.
And a lot of it, as we've said here, is an education issue.
Right, absolutely.
Just reminding folks, I mean, they hear it, and then they hear it again in four or five years, and...
It's just a matter of being aware of it.
Right.
I just learned by traveling with Kathy what it's like to travel with someone who uses a wheelchair and the hurdles you don't have to jump.
Crazy drivers we are.
Oh, she drives okay, but flying on an airplane with somebody who uses a wheelchair, I'm telling you, you better allow for a lot of extra time and a lot of headaches, because chances are your chair's going to get broke.
All right, shall we move on to goal number two? Goal number two, continue to monitor accessibility concerns within the community. All of these pretty much fall under one situation. I mean, basically, is educating not only the business community, but the community at large.
I think if you're outdoing the education piece that we've set forth in number one, then you're going to get the awareness that we're here for people to use as a resource, and so you're going to be monitoring those concerns, because people are going to start coming to you.
For the objective number two, continue to monitor accessibility, one of the objectives that I was thinking was working with the City of Salina to still monitor any upcoming projects for buildings relating to possibly the downtown or kind of goes hand-in-hand with the Parks and Rec objective also that will be coming up later. Just similar scenario there.
And doing it initially before things get started, rather than them have to...
Right.
redo it after it's already done.
Yeah, and we ran into that when the Field House, you know. I think those are the positive things that I looked at in the past, and that's why I said that I think it's still a good objective to have on there is because it seemed to help, especially where we can make an impact.
Yeah, I think even the city folks that we've talked to appreciate the information ahead of time instead of having to readjust.
And one of the other points, I think, within that objective would be to, what we talked about, was addressing any complaints that the City of Salina is running into, dealing with accessibility issues, too. Not necessarily that we need to be informed, but it's a tool that the City of Salina can use by just getting our input from the situation that they're running into, something that maybe we can see could help in the future.
During that for city projects, is there a way to keep up with private projects, say, you know, just new businesses coming to town?
We kind of talked about that.
That is, you know, it's kind of up to them to come to us to, like, if they want some advice on their project. You know, I've seen it done different ways, you know, where a city will kind of advertise it on their website or things like that, but it's almost just more of just kind of outreach and kind of what we already been talking about, providing that outreach so people know that, you know, what the resources are. So like the independent living or, you know, coming to our office to get some information kind of before...
Well, when someone builds something new, they have to get permits. So I wonder if it's not possible to put some form of a informational handout within those permits that lets them know as far as accessibility, these are folks that can offer free advice or...
Yeah, I'm not positive what information they give right now, but, I mean, something like that, it wouldn't like require like a code change or anything like that. So I think that would just be a matter of, like, a meeting with probably like Lauren, the director, you know, our director, to see if something like that would be possible.
Evelyn, can I add, our office recently worked on a flyer to be included in each packet that goes out, and it was just kind of a generalized flyer that talked about basic standard, you know, ADA standards. I'm sure it's as simple as maybe modifying that flyer to saying if you, you know, the AAB is here to, if they want to present their project before you guys, if they want, you know, a second opinion or if they want, you know, somebody that they can talk to, you know, beforehand. So that, I know that just within the last month has been something that's been, you know, starting to go out, just to give them, on our end, to let them know that we know we handed you this information in this packet, so you can't come back and say, "Well, I didn't know."
Right, right.
And I do know that there was also hyperlinks added in that flyer to, you know, the ADA website, and, you know, if you want to read more on this, you know, this is where you can go to, and this, you know, because we, you know, you can't, you can only put so much on, you know, one flyer, but...
Right.
The, I know that that was the thought of, is to make sure that we're covering, you know, that piece of it, to educate those that are coming into the community and building, and just providing them with that information to, and then also for us to know that, you know, we know every packet that goes out has this information and is provided to them. So it may be a matter of just updating that flyer and, you know, putting that piece on there.
Another objective that falls into this one is our transition plan and progress update hasn't been updated since 2009. You know, a lot of that information's going to come from the City of Salina versus us, but as far as if we need to go out and look to see if it's been updated, I guess that's a possibility.
Any other objectives for goal number two? If there are no further comments, we'll move on to goal number three. Create a residential identification program with first responders to identify residents with physically or mentally challenged individuals. It's my understanding that there was a program like this before. Kathy says that it was pulled because of people basically targeting those residents or burglaries and things of that nature. What, go ahead.
No, I just, I was trying to figure out why they not wanted, but that makes sense.
I wonder if we could establish some type of a identification program at the dispatcher's level for first responders. A type of notification that when the call goes out, maybe there's on the computer a red flag indicating that that residence has somebody with a mobility or a mental issue that needs to have particular attention paid to it.
Yeah, so it'd be right there, private, or the whole, everybody wouldn't be able to access it.
Well, I see that as something that individuals would want to make that decision.
Control them, yeah.
Give them a list, but they could call a certain person.
So would you, would you be able to teach people that or give people the option that if you choose to notify the police department for dispatch purposes, if you have an emergency at your home, that you have someone that lives there that has whatever disability, it's up to you to call them and let them know that, because it's about choice, and some folks don't want people knowing.
Well, I think, yeah, that would, it's not something that you'd want to make mandatory, and...
Right, right, but I think having that option's great.
I think it would be pretty simple to do, putting a notification in the water bill that everybody gets that this program is available. Of course, we'd have to, would that be something to go to the city with or...
Yeah, I was going to say, keep in mind that these goals, especially something like this, would be, I would think it would be like more of a long-term project, so maybe even like for the first year saying like, you know, meeting with, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but, you know, like, meeting with the police department or the police chief and just talking about it and seeing how the old project looked and, you know, just kind of getting an idea of how it would even look, and then going from there. Because this one seems like it would be, I mean, it's a really good idea, but it'd probably take more than a year, honestly, with the bureaucratic process.
Right, exactly.
Well, I know last year we had some programming, or not programming, but training that went on dealt with, dealing with individuals that had a disability, a mental disability when they were encountered by police officers.
That's a good idea. You know, even something just like that, like if just preliminarily to feel like, you know, we're getting it done now. I mean, because honestly, is everyone that would be affected by this going to register? Which, you know, I think it should still happen, but what about the people that wouldn't, you know, kind of register? They still deserve to be treated fairly, too, and it's about changing the culture, not just, you know, identifying people that, you know, but also changing the culture of the people that will be interacting with, you know, individuals.
I think that program, that training, is an ongoing thing for first responders. It dealt with, it kind of came about because of an incident out in the Hays area prior to you getting here, Evelyn, but Gina Mortimer, wasn't it, to put that program together?
Yes.
And I think it's an ongoing program for first responders, so.
That would be awesome.
So like our objective this year would be to meet with the police and the sheriff just to see if that's a possibility or if they have any additional information that we don't know about and that might be beneficial?
If it presents any kind of a problem for them.
Right.
Does that sound good to everybody?
It's got to be a first step, and then...
Yeah, because it sounds like the project itself will have different phases.
Right, exactly.
So it's exciting, though.
So, it's exciting though.
So how are we gonna determine who does that? It sounds to me like we're gonna have to have committees that work on the variety of goals that we've set and the steps, objectives that we've identified.
Well, I'm afraid that's, that's gonna be the case, or we're gonna have to select individuals to do it. My concern is, and this hasn't, this hasn't been a flagrant problem, but, I mean, we have to have a quorum to conduct our business, and if we start splitting it up into where we've got committees and subcommittees and stuff, I'm afraid things will fall through the crack. I mean, I'm not trying to be a control freak about it, but
But it happens.
Yeah.
On this particular one, this goal three, that's three here. Could maybe the police come into one of our meetings like this, somebody from the police department?
Oh, that's a good idea.
That'd probably be the best case scenario.
Yeah, I think for this particular goal, in the initial phase of this goal, it makes sense just to invite them to our meeting, and then inquire about it, and have the discussion. And then later on, we can develop into the tougher tasks that will follow.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Makes sense.
Would the invitation for the next meeting come through your office, Evelyn, or would we need to?
Yeah, so before every meeting, we send out an email to all department heads, just giving them a general invitation to come and speak to you guys. That's how we've had Public Works and Parks and Rec come, you know, before. If there's something specific that we, that we know ahead of time, hey, we really want, you know, it's more, instead of asking them, "Hey, would you like to come?", it's more of an invite, "We would really like to talk to you about this topic. Would you please, you know, come to this meeting?", so we can definitely coordinate that for the May meeting, if that's what's decided upon.
So these goals that we're working on, who developed these, when were these developed?
Last meeting.
The last meeting that, oh. At least I'll let you know.
They could be modified or changed.
'Cause I'm thinking like number four and one, like you said, are just exactly pretty much the same.
Well, I think pretty much any of these.
Could be interchangeable.
Yeah, they're all gonna kind of.
Yeah, most, all of these could be solved with an outreach program. It just depends on.
Education, education.
Well, and if I may interject, just from listening to you all and taking notes, when you first started to talk about your goal number one, it almost sounded more as of a general kind of outreach and community, I guess, connection building for you all as a board with the community, and then, because then you, like you said, identified in goal number four, one of the specific things that you want to talk with community stakeholders about, but, like I said, just observation. I mean, I think that first one, I thought you guys were going more in a general direction as far as communication with stakeholders and things like that, so something for you to consider as you continue with what Christie was asking.
I think like one and four could probably be combined together. And that's what you were saying, right, Jay?
Yeah, and instead of it saying handicap parking or accessible parking, it's, you know, it's not just about parking, it's about access.
So maybe like developing an education program.
To educate the community on what access for all.
Access, yeah.
Looks like.
On accessibility standards.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have to agree to that too. Don't slap me coming here and tell you.
That's, that's why we all get together is for exchange of ideas.
I think the reason why the parking came up specifically was just 'cause that was the biggest issue that they were seeing.
Well, that's because that's what's right in front of people all the time.
Yeah, and when you're talking about when you're approaching business, you know, going through all the accessibilities versus just one initially, it's easier to just focus on one accessibility issue versus all accessibility issues. I think is what brought it up.
Right.
And that's the biggest issue that you guys were running into, if I recall.
On that, goal number one, at the end of accessibility, can you add the word for all resident, or all community members? Is that okay with the rest of you?
Is that goal one?
Number one, did you say, goal number one?
Yeah.
And we'll get you a copy of the new one that we do up here.
I was gonna say, that didn't look like what I had, but okay.
Me either, and I, I'm having trouble reading that up there.
It's goal number four on your sheet.
So I assume that we'll get new ones.
Yeah, you'll get a new one.
So we're combining, combine, excuse me, combining number four with number one, basically, right?
So I'm gonna go ahead and erase the work with community businesses to better enforce handicap parking violations, 'cause it's understood that that's all gonna be taken care of in goal number one, correct?
Right.
Okay. And again, we will work on the margins and make it look nice, and, and actually have it officially in your binders for your next meeting, but we just thought that this would be an easier way to just make sure that it gives you guys a way to kinda see it, and then that gives you guys a way to adopt it and get it approved today. So then the create a residential identification program would become number two. And continue to monitor accessibility concerns within the community would become number three. And then this is the last one you guys haven't talked about yet. Create a formal process for, of monitoring projects and keeping regular communication open between the AAB and Parks and Rec. It's kind of alludes to the working with the city, but it's specifically targeting parks and recs. So I don't know if you guys wanna keep that separate, or if you wanna combine it with number three.
I think we had some specific goals and objectives within this one, dealing with what we've talked about with the grant writing and things along those lines. And they also have some different projects than what we were speaking specifically to the upgrades in facilities. So, I think the biggest objective from what we've talked about was what we talked about, creating an accessibility park. And just following up with, you know, what they have going on there, if there's any progress within it, or and it doesn't have to happen at every meeting, just at some point throughout the year, following up.
I'd like to propose an objective, which I've been planning on getting with the director of Parks and Rec anyways. Maybe, like, once this is kinda discussed, and maybe one of the objectives, objectives is that I go and meet with the director and just kind of familiarize him with what, you know, you all would like to accomplish with, you know, between the AAB and the Parks and Rec, just to get a, kind of a good understanding, so that, you know, from here on out, it could be, you know, kinda what you guys are looking for, or looking to accomplish. I don't know if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, kinda what we hope was that they would recognize this as a resource for them before they started on a project, and, and get the information going in. And they've been, and they've been really good to change things when we said, "Oh, wait, that needs to change", but, but I think they probably too would benefit from getting the information.
Well, it costs more money when you have to redo what you just did.
So, if they just knew that we were available, then.
Okay, so I don't know if that is one of the objectives or what, but I, I will meet with the director just to kinda communicate.
We'll put that down as an objective right there. Anyone else you wanna meet? Is that a no?
Oh, anybody? I don't know, that's next.
We got some goals.
Right.
Any other comments on goal number five?
Well, what's our, what's our formal process gonna be? 'Cause it says create a formal process of monitoring projects and keeping regular communication. So what's a formal process for that?
The formal process would basically would fall upon us to attend the Parks and Rec meeting.
Okay, so how often are we gonna do that?
In order to stay on top of it, we'd practically have to be there for every one of them.
How often are they gonna be focused?
The Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings also happen, well, I guess I don't wanna quote and say they happen monthly. I know it happened yesterday. I want to say it is quarterly. I would have to double check on the city website here. If you'll give me a few minutes, I can get back to you with an official answer. But they, they're public, you know, meetings just like, just like these, so, but they are on a Wednesday, for sure.
Do you know if they have like a plan that they put out each year on what they're going to do as far as the parks? As far as changing them, upgrading them?
Any of, it's my understanding, any of the updates come in their meeting, and it's discussed, but it's usually formulated by the director himself, right?
I'm sure they have some kinda work plan.
Yeah.
I can ask about that one.
There you go.
They would have to have a, a, a long-term plan in order to budget for it.
If they have that long-term plan, we could get a copy of that long-term plan as far as it pertains to the parks that we're wanting to keep up with, and then.
Within the goal statement, I didn't like the create a formal process. I think the suggestion that we had was just monitoring projects and keeping regular communication, rather than listing out a formal process.
Right.
I think, yeah, that makes, I mean, 'cause
It kinda ties your hands when you do that.
When you're talking about formal processes, then you gotta change legislation and all that, which is, you know, maybe at some point, but
'Cause we can create lots of objectives within just monitoring the projects and keeping regular communication. I think we've got some big goals there, especially with trying to get them to do an accessible park.
I think it's important that we approach them with the, "We're here to help", that we don't wanna become the police, because then they're gonna.
I think they've, they've got that understanding. I mean, from just the dealings that we've had with Rick Martin here. I think the whole key to, to all of this is gonna be outreach.
I think you're right, Bill.
I did find the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meets monthly on the third Wednesday at 4:00 PM here in this room.
What time did you say?
4:00 PM.
On the third what?
Third Wednesday of the month.
So if we're gonna put that in, are you saying that you wanna go to it each time?
No, I was thinking that's a good job for the vice chair.
Let's strike that off? No, 'cause we, we, I, I see their meeting minutes, so I know what's going on within there.
I get those minutes.
Yeah. But if it's something that you wanna go to, I can understand.
Yeah.
You know, as vice chair, you get this next year.
I thought my term was up coming up.
I don't, you know, I think if we get a, an idea of what their yearly or long-term plan is, we can kinda pick and choose as to what we attend.
And that's kind of the way, when they came and we talked to them, that was kind of the approach, I think, that everybody had was, that if there was something that we could be helpful, or we were interested in, or could be helpful with, we would be glad to step in.
'Cause I, I know Christie has a lot of meetings, and I'm sure you have a lot of meetings as well, and to, to add one more to your list, to attend and find out that it's nothing that, that we can deal with or need to consult them with.
What if we put down that we're gonna monitor their minutes and, and agendas? That's easier done than going to a meeting, I mean. But then how are we gonna hold ourselves accountable for that? What's your checks and balances for that one?
I think looking at the long-term would be the best day, best way to do it.
I think you're right, Bill.
If they have one.
So are you saying you wanna strike that number one off of what she's gone on the board?
Or set a goal, I know for
Not attend each meeting.
I move that we strike number one off of that one.
And instead have it be to?
I think step one is the initiate, initiate the contact. Step two is continue to collaborate. And those are really good objectives right there. I don't know if you really have to go beyond that. I mean, those achieve a lot of goals. But I would fix that, create a formal process, that really bugs me.
Did you, I missed that, I think that was when I was looking up, did you say continue monitoring?
Yes.
Okay.
'Cause we've been doing that, and we've had good communication, it's just, we just need to continue doing it.
I think, and Evelyn, again, if you would correct me, just the, I guess, the general idea for making the objectives is just to have them be measurable, and so that was probably the reason behind that wording about developing a process, just so that we do know, like, some of the questions you're asking. You know, what are the checks and balances here, how are we gonna hold ourselves accountable for this, so.
I think some of our measurables usually come after, when we see those results, from what came from those kinds of objectives that we set, so, I mean, we'll be able to tell if we achieved anything that's measurable, I think, by the end of the year, just within general statements like that.
Anyone like to make an addition to the, to the goals, or?
Do we want to, like, if I scroll all the way up to goal number one, so you can all review again, do you feel like you want to review again what we wrote under each goal before you move to adopt this as the official work plan?
Yeah, let's, let's review it.
Okay.
I won't look at my notes, 'cause I don't jive with the questions now.
So goal number one, develop an education program to educate the community on accessibility for all community members, and those are your objectives? Working with independent connection to create the materials. Work on promoting who AAB is, what they can provide. Completing four outreach activities with local businesses. Speaking with AdAstra to host a public parlay.
On independent connection, we, we aren't plural. Thank you.
Actually, isn't it?
No comment.
No? Do you have ink? No? Do you have ink?
You can put the ink, but you can't have the comma.
Gotcha.
I know, it seems logical, but no.
That's all right. Does anyone else see anything else they need to add or, or correct?
Okay.
Goal number two, create a residential identification program with first responders to identify residents with physically or mentally challenged individuals. We have just the one objective, invite police and sheriff's department to an AAB meeting to discuss this topic.
Okay, I don't like that word up there.
Which word?
The physically or mentally challenged individuals. I would like it to be residents who have disabilities.
Do you want to leave physically or mentally? Like, physical or mental disabilities? How would you all like to word this as a, as a board?
It doesn't matter if it's physical, mental, substance abuse.
Just residents with disabilities, yeah.
A person who has, I mean, and, and I think part of that is that looking at the person first, language, they're a person who has a disability.
And this was including, including history of the previous, right? I mean, how did we want to?
Yeah, attempted program or whatever.
Just background. I mean, I don't know if history's the right word, but anyway, it's all up to you. If you don't, if that's not what you meant, then I'll erase it.
No, that sounds good. What about you?
Okay, goal number three, continue to monitor accessibility concerns within the community by working with the City of Salina to monitor upcoming building projects to include AAB from the beginning, addressing accessibility issue complaints within our community, work on updating transition plan and progress. Last revised in 2009. Does anyone want to add anything there? Goal number four, continue monitoring projects and keeping regular communication open between the AAB and Parks and Rec. Initiate contact with Parks and Rec Director for first meeting regarding Parks and Rec 2019 work plan or department goals. Collaborate with Parks and Rec in order to create an accessible park or other public spaces. I, I heard a couple of other mentions, so I just added that part at the end. Does that look okay?
I have a comment about goal number two.
Yes.
Should that go beyond the police, the, the police and sheriff? Should we include like fire department and EMT to that, instead of, I mean, 'cause it's all first responders, right? And not just police?
Not just police and sheriff. So just replace this, or specifically lay out police, sheriff, itemize?
All first responders, maybe?
All first responders.
Are you okay with that?
If someone calls in the 911, does that go to everybody? I mean, police and sheriff?
911 dispatch? That's a good question.
I'm not sure how that works.
We could have, I mean, we can ask them if they come, you know, I mean, just as basic as, as asking, you know, how, how accessible is 911 dispatch? Where does it go? Because I, I personally do not know.
I don't know.
I never thought of it.
So would we, so would we start with 911 dispatch and then work outwards to like the, everyone else, I'm assuming?
And let me know who it goes to, so we can act accordingly.
There you go.
That's one that, like the others, some of the others sounds like a, a potential project with lots of different phases. So you almost get into objectives and sub-objectives. And so Evelyn, for the sake of this work plan, what, what's kind of your direction for how much more they maybe should develop any of this?
I would say that, that, I mean, that sounds like a, a good objective to start with, which other objectives would kinda grow out of. So I think that that's the logical, I think, I think that that, I think that that works, because it's such a big project.
Yeah, and isn't it a starting point? And then if you, if we somewhere along the way decide that we need additional objectives or sub-objectives, then can't we do like a modification to this and... If we need to do that.
If you go beyond the objective, then it's just extra perks.
Right. And it's subjective to whoever's reading it, too, and what it means to you.
Certainly describes where we need to start.
Mm-hmm. It's a good jump-off point, huh?
Any other comments or changes that you'd like to make?
Not me.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the goals and objectives for 2019?
I move we... Accept the goals and objectives that we've put together today.
I second it.
I haven't asked for it yet. Do I have a second?
I'm holding it back now.
I'll second it, Bill.
Chair Rosson, I also wanted to just clarify, it would be accepting it and then formally adopting the work plan. So...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That happened. I heard it.
You'll be sorry you said that.
And I'd like to thank everybody for coming into the special meeting. And again, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that we have to have a quorum to conduct the business of this, of this committee. And if, you know, you're all busy, I know that, if you can't be here, an email would be greatly appreciated so that we can save everybody a lot of time if, for weather reasons, or health reasons, or what have you, transportation problems, we can make other arrangements or reschedule the meeting. But I certainly appreciate your coming in on relatively short notice. With that, do we have a move to adjourn the meeting?
Hi, Bill.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Who, who was the motion?
Christie.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Meeting's adjourned.